Good evening. It's Tuesday, June 22nd, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. My name is Joe Baker, and as Mayor of Kennedy, Texas, it is my honor to welcome everyone here tonight and call this workshop meeting of the Kennedy City Council to order. I will now call the roll and establish whether or not a quorum is present. District One Councilmember Cindy Seine?
Here.
District Two Councilmember John Rodriguez?
Here.
District Three Councilmember Chris Parker?
Here.
District Four Councilmember James Douglas?
Here.
District Five Councilmember Sandra Schultz?
Here.
Five members of the city council are present, and we have a quorum present this evening. That will bring us to item number two. If you all rise and join me and say a prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, please guide us and help us to make wise, sound, and good decisions for the people of Kennedy, Texas this evening. Thank you for all the blessings in our life. Please give us the patience to work with one another and do what's best for the people of this community. For it's in your Son's name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That brings us to item four on the agenda. Discussion for operations and maintenance agreement between the City of Kennedy and the San Antonio River Authority for the Escondido Creek Parkway. Just before this meeting started, I passed out a little clarification. There was a little bit of a discrepancy between the agenda item that I requested and the one that was posted. So I just want to read the one that was requested on May 25th. Consideration of possible action in regard to establishing a date and time to conduct a workshop for the purpose of discussing items related to modifying the operations and maintenance agreement between the City of Kennedy and the San Antonio River Authority for the Escondido Creek Parkway and possible future changes to the ownership and/or lease of the property as a way to ensure the long-term care and maintenance of the park. The one that ended up on the agenda is a shorter version, but I just wanted to let everyone know that what we're considering tonight is because this is a workshop meeting and not a formal, regular meeting, I believe it's correct that we can discuss anything as it pertains to the agreements between Sarah and the city. Is that correct, Mr. Lynn?
We can discuss anything as it pertains to the actual agreement that's in your packet.
Yes, sir. With that being said, Mr. Lynn, would you like to lead off with a presentation?
Actually, Mayor, if I may digress, I'd like to let Mr. Graham lead off from the San Antonio River Authority, if it's okay.
Yes, sir. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. I'm Steve Graham. I'm the Assistant General Manager for the San Antonio River Authority. Formerly, I was the interim general manager. Maybe I should make a quick introduction. Derek Bays, he's our current general manager. Maybe Derek, come on, let me explain. Maybe I'll just kind of summarize the history. Would that be helpful, Mr. Lynn?
Yes, sir.
So, as you know, we have a lease agreement that was signed with the city council and Sarah Board back in October of 2018. Lease agreement really just gave a 99-year lease for the purpose of the park that we have today. The lease agreement does stipulate that there will be an operation and maintenance manual that will be developed, and so we all agreed to kind of wait towards closer to opening. So we actually developed sort of the first rendition of that operation and maintenance agreement in September. We worked back and forth with the city manager and your city attorney in February and March. We worked on different ideas. A lot of the dialogue was around sort of termination agreement terms in that operation manual. So originally, there was a termination without clause in there. Then we modified that to be with a notice of 365 days. It was just a back and forth. There was a little tweaking between the city manager and myself, and we had basically a version that we were comfortable with. That version of that agreement went to the Escondido Parkway Oversight Committee in May, I believe, and the committee expressed concern about that language about termination. And I was not at that meeting of the Oversight Committee. Galen Elke, who's one of our board members, is also on the Oversight Committee. He might better explain that, but my understanding was there was a concern about the long-term obligation by the Sarah to do operation and maintenance of the park. You know, obviously, just like this elected board, our board could make decisions 50, 70 years from now. Who knows what? There's not a commitment forever. I think in our lifetime, there would be, but there was some dialogue about how do we firm up that commitment that the River Authority has to the City of Kennedy. We've worked with Mr. Lynn about if we terminated, the City of Kennedy would take up the operation and maintenance of the park. There's also been dialogue about should the land be given in fee to the River Authority, possibly with the idea that if Sarah did not operate the park, the land as a park that was the original purpose intended, it could revert back to the city. So there's been lots of variations, sort of kicked around on what was proposed. So at a staff level, we have a workable arrangement. We're open to other ideas. Obviously, Derek, as our general manager, has to make sure our board is in concurrence with what we agree to here. So that's what we hope to resolve today. Galen is, while he's not the chair of our board, he's clearly the lead in terms of from our board. So would it be appropriate for me to ask Galen that?
Yes, absolutely. Just for the benefit of the council members, I was at the last meeting of the Escondido Creek Parkway Oversight Committee, and this was kind of discussed at length during that meeting. So I thought it would, a reason it would be a good reason to have this workshop is so that Galen could make the same case that he made during that meeting before the whole city council. So Galen, if you could just kind of summarize your thoughts in regard to this.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for calling this workshop, giving us a chance to visit about this. I was going to introduce our general manager, Derek, and our assistant general manager, Steve. You all already met them. So I'm going to go ahead and get the rest of the Sarah group. Kristen Hansen, most of her developer, she's the Watershed Park Operations Department Manager. She was the project manager for the building of the Escondido Creek Parkway, and now she's in charge of the operation and maintenance of it. And then Kendall Hayes, our government affairs committee. She'll be seeing her a lot now. She's the one that goes downstream and meets with people in Wilson and Corns and Goliad County. Did anybody else show up? No, I don't think so. Gary Richards is on our Oversight Committee. I might introduce him. And Joey sometimes has filled in for him on Oversight Committee. But basically, what we're interested in, we were interested, if you agree that the Escondido Creek Parkway is a good thing for the community and the City of Kennedy and like with the way it's running, which I think most people do. If you don't, well, that's part of the discussion we have. But anyway, we're trying to assure that, we promised the people, I mean, many people in this room donated money to it. Many organizations did. Sidney Kennedy and Sarah both put in probably over $2 million collectively. When you go through 4B and call the Chamber money, the city money, and then the city itself put $500,000 in. So they've got about equal, pretty close to equal. We've raised about $2 million with grants and gifts, donations people made. If you look at that honor wall out there, you'll see how much support we've had. And all the work that's gone into this, we want it to last for as long as possible. We know that we're not going to be, all of us in this room won't be always in charge, always having to say something. Derek's just come on. He may be here a while yet. Steve's probably going to retire pretty soon. I'm not going to be on the board forever. And right now, the people that are in place, we have no problem. I mean, you know, we look. When I mentioned it to Kristen, she said, "I thought I'd be taking care of it as long as I worked here." And hopefully, that will be the case. But I just recall when we started discussing this operation and maintenance agreement and in the termination clauses and so forth, it reminded me of a time, first of all, let me say, I've lived in Kennedy since 1978, so I've been here a long time. I've been on the Sarah Board, I think, over 17 years, so I've been on it for a good while. Early years, and Steve will remember this, we used to take care of Ronnie and Calabasas Lake for city public services in San Antonio. And we had a little store out there. We, I don't exactly know all the things we did, but we operated it. And in operating it, we were losing $500,000 a year. And so one time at a board meeting, I think, or it may have been a fiscal committee meeting, I'm not sure which, but that's where it started. The idea came up that, why are we spending money on this? We don't even own it. You know, why don't we use that money for something that we own? And while you can argue that our situation here is a little different than that because we didn't have the big investment in it to begin with, it did scare me. And I thought, you know, someone per stack was going to get on the Sarah Board 20 years from now and going to say, "Why are we spending money down there in Kennedy on that Escondido Creek Parkway?" And I'm sure by that time, it's going to be $500,000 or maybe way over that, when we don't even own it. So we're proposing that the property be deeded to Sarah. And it's not, it's not a power struggle. I said, "I've got as much allegiance to the City of Kennedy as I do to Sarah. I've been here longer." I think it's just the best way, with the reversion that if we don't operate it as a park, that it reverts totally back to the City of Kennedy. When you think about it, if you're thinking about you're giving land away, when we did that, the project was done by Sarah people. We had real estate department contacting the landowners. We had to do title work and all that, came up with the parcels of property we need, meet with them. And there was a, probably half of it or better was donated. I think just about everything on the west side of the highway was donated. We had, and then some of it on the east side. TechStop had a plot of their property, and that's donated for the project. We didn't pay for that. Wells Fargo donated land there where the horn-toed habitat is and the pump check. That's all donated by Wells Fargo. When you get to the back west end, Cletus Bianchi donated that land that we have the trail going around the backside. Then the county has that land where the trail comes up the county road. And then even by the pavilion area, that was Haley land, that was donated. We did buy a few parcels of land, but I mean, and we just, we decided to put that, we did that, and we did, we were doing it all. We put it in the City of Kennedy name, you know, for the time being. Idea being at the very beginning is that we were going to own it jointly, but we really never addressed that we had so many other problems. We were trying to get it done. We always kind of said, "We'll deal with that later," type of thing. Well, it finally came to the point where we needed the operation and maintenance agreement, and it was time to kind of tie the bows and get it all done. And that's when this came up. Now, I'd be happy to address any questions that you would have about that. I don't want to give, I could talk more, but I've talked to some of you in different situations before, and I don't want to bore you with the same old story over and over again. But basically, in a crooks, that's what it amounts to. We get that done. We'll still need an operation and maintenance agreement, but I think we will be a lot more lenient to looking at the deal if we get the ownership done. One other point, which you probably don't, it's not as important to you because you're representing the City of Kennedy, but the reason I got Sarah involved in this to begin with is because we did not have a park presence in Corns County. We had numerous parks in Marin County. We have at least two in Wilson County. We have one in Goliad County. We didn't have one in Corns County. I was the chairman of the board during the time we were doing the mission reach and had to go every time we had an opening of a segment and thought how great that was and on the way home thinking, "I wish we could have something like that in Corns County." And I said, "Well, we don't have a river that runs through any of our towns." And I thought, "Well, we got a creek, and it's a tributary of the river," and that's kind of where the idea started. And it started, the talking stages probably about 2009, and then 2012 is when we got an interlocual agreement between Sarah and the City of Kennedy, and the project was official. We managed to visit with 4B Corporation and the Chamber of Commerce. They each gave us kind of a startup donation to where we got started, and we've gone from there. We thought the whole thing was going to be about a $2 million deal. We even wondered one time whether we could spend that much because there was a chance at the beginning that we might get a donation of that. Well, as it turns out, it's about a $7.5 million deal. But we kept adding things because the people were asking, and we, they wanted an avenue there. They wanted a pavilion. They wanted a skate point. They wanted a splash pad. And so we tried to raise money, and we managed to do it. I don't know how we did it, but we managed to do it. And now, after doing all that, we just want to, we want to do anything that's possible to assure that it's going to last for as long as possible for the community. Having it, having it a Sarah park would fit better into our picture of being a community park. It's in Kennedy. We can't move it. You've got it in Kennedy no matter what we do. And we don't want to move it. That's kind of the background, so now we'll have questions or comments.
Galen, before we move on, I just want personally to thank you and Kathy and the River Authority for bringing this beautiful park to Kennedy, Texas. I think it's one of the greatest things I've ever seen happen to the city, and I've looked here about 25 years myself. So I want to thank you and Galen, you and Kathy and the River Authority, and then all the other groups that you brought together. TechStop, 4B, the city. It's a long list. When you go to the website, the Escondido Creek Parkway, there's a list of sponsors there, and it's a very lengthy list, and that's what makes the project so wonderful, that it was such a broad-based team effort. So I just want you to know that on behalf of the city, we appreciate your efforts. So if there are any questions from the council, we can open up at this time. I know one of the things we discussed is, Galen, you had a picture in your head of a time many years from now where there's a meeting at the River Authority boardroom, and they may be going through the paperwork, and they're comparing assets and liabilities, and then looking at operating expenses, and they're trying to work out their budget. And can you imagine that one of those board members might say something to the effect of, "Why are we spending so much money taking care of this park if we don't even own it?" And so that was your concern, and that makes a lot of sense to me. I think if you own something, you're much more inclined to take care of it for the long haul than if it's just a 99-year lease or something that you can just opt out of at some point. So that, I personally, I can't see a downside to deeding the property to the River Authority. It's one less thing for the city to take care of, and we have a lot on our plate right now with the sports complex and a variety of other projects that are happening. So I, and Mr. Lynn, you might be able to make the case or enlighten me if there is a downside to changing ownership, but for the life of me, I can't think of a downside to this. It's going to help ensure the long-term care of this beautiful new park.
Mayor, first off, again, Mr. Elke, what you and the folks at San Antonio River Authority did, this park, just nothing shy of amazing. It's beautiful. I've been all over the country, and I can tell you, I've not seen a park this beautiful before, and I've seen some pretty beautiful parks in my time. So thank you for the efforts you and your wife and all those who pulled together from Sarah did to bring this here, not just for the residents of Kennedy, but for the residents of Corns County. Mayor, to address your statement, first off, regardless of ownership of the real estate, the maintenance and operation agreement exists so that the City of Kennedy will budget funds to help with the maintenance and operations of the park itself. We currently do some shredding. We pay for shredding for them. They have a guy that comes out and does that. And that's kind of why it exists. And one of the things Mr. Graham and I talked about early on was this particular concern, and I misinterpreted the concern in the beginning. I thought the concern was what if the city decided they didn't want to be a park and wanted to get out of the agreement? And Mr. Graham enlightened me that, no, it was more so what if Sarah wanted to get out of it? And we did come up with a failsafe, if you will. And the failsafe was very simple. We just leave everything as is, the status quo alone. We don't touch anything. And we just put a clause in the maintenance agreement contract that if Sarah decided to abandon it, then everything would revert to the City of Kennedy because we were partners in taking care of it. We would be there taking care of it anyway, and we could continue the ongoing maintenance of the park in perpetuity since we are a municipality. So that would change. And Mr. Graham was in agreement with that, and that's kind of what comprised the document that went to the board in May. With all this coming about, there are some caveats that we have to be concerned with, okay? We are a Type A general law municipality, not a home rule municipality, which means, again, in its simplest form, a Type A, we can really only do what the law tells us we can do versus a home rules, they can do whatever the law doesn't preclude them from doing. So it's kind of a little bit of a different scenario. What we have is, you know, time and time again, our attorney has sat there and stated, "We can't do this. We have to declare things a surplus. We can't give things away." And land is certainly no, it is not absent from that. As a matter of fact, Local Government Code 253.001B actually states that we cannot touch any land that's been designated as a park and give it away. We can sell it, but it has to go to the voters for it to be sold. And as we go through 253 of the Local Government Code, there's certainly a number of sections as it goes down. You've got 253.08, which talks about real property at an auction. You've got 253.009, which talks about conveyance of adjoining property to Municipal Development Corporation, which unfortunately, Sarah's not an MDC. You have 253.010, sale of real property to certain nonprofit religious organizations. That could have been an avenue on this particular thing, but it actually defines it in the code as nonprofit being a specific 501(c)(3) organization. I did go to the IRS website. There is a tool in the IRS's website where you can go in, you can search for 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations by name or area. I did that. The word "Sarah," San Antonio River Authority, and the word "Escondido," do not pull up anything under 501(c)(3) with the Internal Revenue Service, which means none of the organizations are 501(c)(3). So then that would be one we couldn't even use there. And 253.01, conveyance to nonprofit corporation for public use, that one, again, goes back to the 501(c)(3) designation. So without Sarah being a 501(c)(3) corporation, we can't convey the property to them according to Local Government Code 253. And the only way we could do this is if we did it through a sale, and the only way we could do it through a sale was we would have to do it through an auction. And the way governments do that when they sell property is usually by bid to the highest bidder. And so Sarah would have to actually bid for this property, and then they would have to come in as the highest bidder in order for them to actually get the property from the City of Kennedy. So unfortunately, while Mr. Elke found an idea that could have maybe viable, we worked, the Local Government Code precludes us as a general law municipality from doing that.
Ms. Gab, is that correct?
That is correct. And then there, a different portion of the government, or the Local Government Code, you know, it does go into how what you're really selling and leasing as a city is the right to have these kind of concessions and different amusements in parks. So all those things you can sell and lease to other groups to build, you know, a library or to build just different sort of art installations or other park enhancements, that is considered totally separate from, you know, the actual sale or leasing of the plant. And that is favorable to do.
Galen, I believe you mentioned the park in Goliad belongs to the River Authority. Is that correct?
It's correct.
Was there at any point ownership by the City of Goliad, and was it transferred or was it initially purchased?
It was gifted.
Gifted, directly to the River Authority?
I don't know if it makes any difference, but the city didn't actually buy this property to begin with.
Ms. Gab, would that be something worth considering? The history of how the land came under to be?
How did it get, we got it by tax people?
I actually am unsure how we acquired the land. I don't know that history. I could look into that further.
Mr. Mayor, what I would say is if any of the property was donated to the City of Kennedy or for this project, that falls under the Finance Code's special fund, I mean, dedicated funds type clause, that means the property can only be used for that. So as long as it's being used for the park, which it is, you know, we're okay along those lines, but again, it would go towards who it was deeded to. And unfortunately, at this point, whoever has the deed to the property, that's going to be probably the determining factor. And if it's the City of Kennedy, then unfortunately, 253 governs what we do. And, you know, we can't speak for Goliad and what their council did. We can only speak for what the City of Kennedy's council does. And what we do know is that a municipality may not make donations, okay? That has been, that's very much a part of the law.
We had, yeah, a similar situation recently with the lights that were sold to the Little League organization in both for a nominal amount. But even that sort of arrangement would not be allowed under the law?
No, because this is actual real property, so then we would have to go to the bidding portion of Code 253 in order to sell it. So then we would have to go out and advertise for it, and then we have to take bids.
So there's a distinction between real property and property such as lighting systems?
Right, because that stuff can be declared a surplus, whereas land can.
I'll also say that for, you know, requirement that this go and be voted on generally by the public, the way of the viewpoint that they take to kind of determine what is parkland is sort of based on what the citizens consider to be a city park or, you know, what is commonly perceived to be parkland to the city. So that's another consideration that you would take into account for how the courts would consider this already as a park, no matter kind of the trail and the deeds or picking ups.
Funds for this park was, as we collected donations and so forth, it was channeled through the San Antonio River Foundation, which is a part of the San Antonio River Authority. San Antonio River Foundation is a 501(c)(3) organization. So could this be deeded to the San Antonio River Foundation?
Ms. Gab?
That is something that we, I would have to look into further. I think that what I was hearing right now is kind of conflicting information regarding the San Antonio River Authority, but I'll look into that further with the team.
Could you clarify, how do we?
Oh, I think that, just maybe I misinterpreted something that was said earlier in the meeting. I thought that something was said about the San Antonio River Authority actually not being a 501(c)(3).
We are not.
We are not.
We are a governmental entity, we're a subdivision of the state of Texas created under Chapter 49 of the State Water Code. It's our official definition. We're like a school district in governments. Elected board created by the state can be abolished by the state. We're not local, we're not federal, we're a state subdivision. So we're governmental. What Mr. Elke was saying was our board and many governmental units do create nonprofit
What Mr. Elke was saying was our board and many governmental units do create nonprofits where private money can go to them instead of that governmental unit. So, many years ago, gosh, 18 years ago, we created the San Antonio River Foundation. It has its own board, its own executive director, they are independent from us, but their mission statement, the reason they were created for is to work conjuctively with the River Authority, a governmental entity. So, it does become a vehicle where donations can be given for tax purposes. And I had not even thought about that. That might, that might be worth looking at, give it to them. And of course, you would have to bring their board here to dialogue with you on that because they're not under our control, they are independent, but they are, their missions are joined ours.
It would be a separate party agreement?
Yes.
It sounds like very similar to a school district's education foundation, like, you know, current city has one, Kennedy has one.
Raise money above and beyond what the school would give.
Right.
That's exactly right. So, they raise money for art projects and land and they're working with us on our park master planning. And they would fundraise for things that we wouldn't ordinarily be able to.
Does the San Antonio River Foundation currently own any real property that chooses a park?
No. They pretty much do fundraising. They did build a park recently called Confluence Park. And that land, they did purchase, but they've given that to us. And they raised quite a bit, it was like $7 million, and that was all conveyed to us. So, with this one particular thing, we wouldn't be able to do it under 253.010 because that specifically stipulates that the nonprofit has to develop housing for low-income individuals. Every section of that relates back to that. However, under 253.011, there is no such further breakdown of designation. That being said, the one thing a municipality can do when they own land is they can give that land to their own EDC, okay? And there is no stipulation here that precludes that from happening. So, if the city of Kennedy wanted to take the land and give it to the EDC, that would be one thing. But beyond that, they, we really, our hands are really tied by the code, at least from the perspective I see.
If it was owned by the 4B Corporation, then from Sarah's perspective, they're still not the owners of the property, they're still leasing.
Correct. But the 4B corporations, when you have a 4B corporation, the reason you have a 4B corporation is because a 4B corporation can do a lot more than a municipality can do, has a lot more autonomy and leeway against the codes, okay? The A and the B just dictates the type of tax we're using and what they can do. A is more manufacturing facilities, things of that nature. A B is more parks and economic developments on the smaller scales type thing, okay? You can give land to a 4B corporation. And then the 4B corporation can in turn backdoor, they can do what they need to do, but whatever they do, it has to be a benefit for economic development, okay? So, if they were to give land to Sarah, they would have to be able to justify it by economic development. They would have to be able to tie visitors to the park for economic growth within the city of Kennedy. They can't just give it to Sarah for the sake of deeding it to Sarah as using this as a backdoor vehicle. That wouldn't qualify, okay? This wouldn't be like, for example, the city of Kennedy owns four acres off of Craig Street and we have a restaurant that wants to come to town, but they want that four acres. So, we take that four acres and we give it to the 4B. And then the 4B deeds it to them as a tax abatement over 10 years, takes the cost of it, breaks it down over 10 years, and at the end of 10 years, they sign it. That's a business coming in, it's going to bring in water revenue, sewer revenue, property tax is going to create jobs for residents of Kennedy, it's going to bring sales tax in, you may even get heads and beds off that, okay? That's not the case here with the park. So, with it being a park, we really have a lot we're trying to work around to try to come up with some resolution. You know, I would say, and I know it's probably not the popular consensus in the room, okay? But as Mr. Graham stated when he first began discussing this, Mr. Graham and I are the people who are ultimately going to be the ones who are going to have to enforce this agreement. The city council is not going to enforce it, the board Sarah's not going to enforce it. So, as long as Mr. Graham and his office is here, we're the ones that's going to have to be the ones that's going to have to do this. And we did come to a mutual consensus of something that we were happy with as the people who are going to have to carry this out. I would, I would say that I would just move forward with as is, given the constraints that we have on, you know. Mr. Elke's suggestion by no means is bad. It's actually an intelligent solution to a problem, just unfortunately because we're a type A, our hands are tied and we can't. Now, if we were a home rule, we would be able to do it because again, of the way things work. So, that's, that would be my suggestion to the council.
Mr. Mayor, I have one thing. I'm Derek Bays, I'm the new general manager of the River Authority. I've been here six weeks, so it's been a whirlwind of certain things. But I will offer, when it comes to the economic development and, you know, there are different ways to try to, I think, get to where, you know, the potential is to get there. But I have not seen San Antonio River Authority park that has not contributed to economic development yet. Now, is it as direct as what the city manager has said? No, it's not the restaurant analogy that you just gave. But pretty much every single park that I've seen has contributed to the community property values in the area and has brought people in and made them want to live in the particular neighborhoods of the parks that Sarah has been involved in. So, may not be as direct, but I think that you can make a reasonable economic justification if the decision is made to go that way.
I think we've seen that firsthand, there's a retail business nearby the park. And I believe, Galen, you'd mentioned that the park and because it was planned was one of the reasons they chose that location, is that correct? And so, I think it could serve as a cornerstone for further economic development because it has become such a focal point now, draws attention from the highway. I've probably directed 50 visitors how to get back out to the highway. It's a little complicated right now, but we spend a lot of time at the park. But people pull in off the highway and then they try to figure out how to get back to the highway. But that tells me that we're getting visitors in Kennedy and a lot of them to this new park. And that's a good thing, that's something we've been working on for years.
I can tell you from the chamber's perspective, I've probably had in the past weeks five or six people alone from out of Kennedy, outside of Kennedy, call me and they're looking for corrections, they want to know what's here. And they call me about how it works slash pad. So, there are people coming here that are not from Karnes County. So, that plays a part of that.
I can tell, tell you all that I've personally visited with numerous people out of the park that are not from here. Schools are bringing their ACE program kids here. Those kids are then telling their parents about the time they had it and they're coming back. And these people are from Beaville, Pettis, Pawnee, of course, Karnes City, Rungay, Yorktown. I've met people from Yorktown here. And they have a park with ducks. Kids love ducks, you know, and they're coming here. So, I don't remember off the top of my head the actual numbers, but Kristen can correct me if I'm wrong. In about, what was it, month, two months' time, there was over 6,000 vehicles trapped to that park. I don't know the Kennedy's population off the top of my head, but that sounds like more than double, if not close to triple the numbers. People are coming to this park. I don't know how anybody else feels on council. My personal feeling is if there's a way to convey the land, give the land, whatever terminology we need to, you know, assign it, I personally feel like if Sarah owns the land, whether, you know, Mr. Graham is with Sarah another five years, 10 years, 20 years, 50 years from now, whoever's in his spots will continue to fund this park.
Of course, now it's already gone over to Mr. Bays. Six weeks, things are already changing.
I, I mean, those are just my, I don't think, no matter how we look at this, if there's a way to give the land to Sarah or sell the land for a dollar, whatever the case may be.
You're basically agreeing with Galen and myself that we have a better likelihood of long-term care of the park.
I don't, I don't see how the city of Kennedy is losing anything. You know, yeah, we're taking a name off of here and changing the name of the park, but, I mean, not changing the park, changing the ownership. The city of Kennedy is not going to lose out, in my opinion, on doing that. If anything, it takes the responsibility off of the city, other than emergency services. Of course, those would continue, but, I mean, if Sarah's spending the money, doing all the work, you know, their staff there seven days a week, I mean, to me, it just makes sense. I know my personal feeling is if I own something, I'm going to take care of it.
Well, I'm just going to touch on what James is already saying. To me personally, there has not been one time since that park opened that I've driven by either direction on North Fifth or 181 that that place is not full. And here lately, the splash pad loaded with kids. And I'm going to tell you, those parents are taking those kids to McDonald's and Sonic and the Burger King, any company around, those kids are eating something. Or they're going to HEB convenience store. Moms running to Walmart to go get a swimsuit or a pair of shorts and tennis shoes, boat shoes, something. The money is being spent here for sure. I'm a mom and a grandma and I know what's happening out there at the park. With that being said, I fully agree too with James that whatever we have to do to get that park in the hands of Sarah, for what they've done is amazing. And we have to remember that Sarah, that San Antonio River Authority are the experts. They are the experts. They're the experts of taking care of that creek, taking care of the natural surroundings around the creek. If something was to go awry in that splash pad, they have the capabilities, the knowledge to be right on top of that for any type of bacterial, anything that could be happening, something's going crazy with the water. That's what Sarah does, you know, that's their big deal. I think also that it's a guarantee that the park's going to be taken care of properly. And not that the city of Kennedy is not capable of that or the people that work for Kennedy, but there's so many things, so many components out there at that park. And there's so many people that are already educated and they go to seminars and they have webinars, they have classes they have to attend because that's what Sarah does. And those people are already in place out there at the park, you know, so I think, and it's not like they're going to take anything from Kennedy because they can't pack that park out piece by piece and take it somewhere else. I mean, it's in Kennedy, period. It's here. So, we may as well just let Sarah continue on that same path because it's such an asset here. People coming from all over the place. And we're not losing anything at all. The property's here, you know, it's not going anywhere. It may not be owned by the city, but it's going to be owned by the rightful people who can take care of it properly and for years and years to come, not just, you know, willy-nilly and people changing, you know, around all the time and you're going to have to re-educate them and have classes on how to take care of the things that are out there. And I think Sarah's probably, if it was in their hands, really willing to bring even more into that park, to even expand it further along, bringing greater, more wonderful things to the park for us to enjoy, you know? And not just us, all over the place. And you're right, people see the park off the highway and they pull in, what's going on down there? Look at that place, you know? I just think that whatever we could do, whatever our city attorney can find, dig deep, dig deep in there because I think Sarah would sincerely do a wonderful job. We've already seen what they're capable of, you know? And the city won't be able to anything.
We have something great and we want it to last as long as possible.
Absolutely. And I think if you took it to a vote even to our, to the community, to the citizens of Kennedy, I think that anyone that has been out there would feel exactly the same way. They want that park to stay as beautiful and pristine and functional as it is, and it'll only get better, you know? That's my personal opinion.
Like I said, as long as we can tie it to economic development, that's the key in order to do it through the EDC.
Now, they might not spend the night in a hotel, but I'm sure they're going to spend money.
The code is, you know, one of those ones that, as long as you can tie it to economic development. So, if we can tie it, that's all I'm saying, that's, you know, the quantity, that's the advice that I have to give the council. If we can do it like that, it's a, it's an idea that we can do. The only question I would have, and this is the only question I would have, is if we do this, then is the city still not responsible for paying for the shredding over there like we are currently? Will we pay a couple, several thousand dollars a year for the guy to cut the grass along the bank over there? Or is Sarah going to pick up all maintenance of the park at this point since they'll have land?
Are we still paying Sarah $35,000 a year? I remember when I was in charge of the street department and I was a public works director, we, I used to budget $35,000 a year for shit. You still doing that?
We're still paying them to do the shredding along Escondido Creek. And that's part of the maintenance and operations.
Part of the downstream?
Out there by the ballparks, all the way down, the higher grass area up there, okay? So, then the question would become from an operational standpoint is if we deed the land over to them, we now have no dog in the fight, so to speak, because we don't have the land. And are they going to assume 100% of all the costs to keep it up? Or are they going to want the city of Kennedy to put money in?
This money that we had budgeted back then, well, not too long, it was only three years ago, that we would put it in the budget every year and it was a payment to Sarah. That was before the park, that we paid for them to do shredding all around here. So, we would still, even regardless of the park, we still would be paying them that money, right?
Sir?
So, let me just clarify as far as what the River Authority has been maintaining for a number of years. So, like city manager has said, from basically the ballpark area all the way down the creek, under 181, then under Fifth Street, and then even further down towards where we're talking about phase two, historically, that's where the department has shredded. Now, since the park has opened, we maintain it anyway. And so, but we still shred those other two areas that are not considered parkland at this time. So, we still shred those, those areas. And so, we do work with the city of Kennedy to charge for those areas, but it's been reduced and we obviously don't charge for what we're already maintaining in the park.
But we're still paying for the shredding?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, reduce portion. Now, on the operation and maintenance and the lease agreement, it does break out responsibilities, for example, security, police, that still stays with the city. We look at this as a joint partnership with the city of Kennedy. The fact that we own it, the city that owns it, we don't care, honestly. Mr. Lynn and I don't care. As long as I'm going to be around, it's going to be maintained by the River Authority. But my board can't obligate a future board, your council can't obligate a future council. So, but as long as we're, most of the people around here today, it's going to be fine. But I think Mr. Elke is really looking long-term. It does strengthen the argument, but we're committed on the short term and we're willing to work on the legal issues to help resolve them. I can tell you with the city of San Antonio and Bear County, we've done economic studies to justify the economic return on parks we've done in Bear County. So, I don't know if that would satisfy that city government code, I'm just not familiar with that at all, not an attorney. But we could certainly, if it's an economic analysis, maybe that's something we could work on developing.
I think it may be true that most parks or your average park may not be a great economic boom, but this is no ordinary park and this is no ordinary community either. The demographics are different here than the average and I think we're seeing firsthand positive impact. And if there needs to be some data gathered or some studies done that could help make that case, then it seems to me that there could be a way down the road to make that happen if it's what the council chooses. Now, we've heard from two council members, I just wondered how the other three feel about this, if you have any thoughts, one way or the other. Here's what I was thinking, if the council can agree this evening, we may be able to ask Mr. Bays and Ms. Gadd to get together and answer that question. It may be a long winding road, but there may be a way to get ownership of the park under Sarah's name instead of the city's, the way Mr. Elke has asked, and I think would be a good idea for the long-term care of the park. So, we shouldn't take that next step unless there's an agreement here this evening.
Two of the things I'd like to say, first of all, I'd like to introduce Tripp Rutland. He's your other Karnes County director that's in the Sarah
He's your other Karnes County Director that's on the Sarah Board. He wasn't here when I was introducing you out here. Thanks for coming, Tripp. And the second thing, uh, this would release the Kennedy, with the City of certain liability. There was a case, and I don't know, I don't know everything about it, but some kid died from exposure to a splash pad somewhere else in East Texas somewhere. And, and, uh, we're checking the water levels all the time, but the quality of the water, sure that doesn't happen. So I think you're gonna, you know, we, we need to have Sarah maintain it. And it, but, but, and if you don't own the parkway, I don't think you're gonna be liable in case something like that happens. So there's, there's part, uh, a little bit to consider there too. And, uh, Mr. Baker, I think that, that if there's a willing to do this, if there's a, if there's willingness to do this the way I'm asking, I think there's a way to do it. And we just have to find the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elke. There any comments from the public, or any questions from the council members or the Well, I'll leave it up to the council. What would you like to do with this? Should we just leave it as is, or do you wanna consider having the city attorney work with Mr. Bays and see if there's a way to make the ownership change?
I don't know how I feel.
I like the idea of the two working together to see what, if anything, can be done to keep the options open. Yeah. To be able to, to do it to Sarah.
Well, can we all agree to do that, take that next step, or is anybody opposed to having the city attorney work with Mr. Bays?
I don't agree, given land.
Just all friends?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm still kind of confused as to, um, I don't know how I would say that, but what is, even though I hear it, I'm not understanding what the difference would be because either one is gonna be maintaining it, right? If one decides, we wanna get out, the city will take over. If the city wants to get out, Sarah takes over. Correct. Is that what happens?
Yes, if you, if you have no problem with, with the city taking over and spending the money on it, uh, then you don't have any worries.
And the cost is about, running about three hundred thousand a year, is that correct?
That's what it is right now.
The other thing to consider is that Sarah has a great deal more expertise and experience with parks than the City of Kennedy has. And this is a somewhat technical part, mainly due to the splash pad. Yeah, I think it's become something that's a little more complicated than we all kind of anticipated in the early phases of this. Yes?
It's not only complicated just because of that splash pad. What complicates our park is the Escondido Creek itself. Absolutely has to be maintained...
Proamed to flooding, yeah.
...in a specific way. Because if it's not, then that poses a flooding problem to the city. If that park is not taken care of properly in the actual waterway, then we're talking about flooding. And that's happened before because the creek was not being taken care of properly. Um, you know, I can think of a couple of times when, um, we actually flooded here. Ninety-eight would have been one of them, and maybe again in early 2000. Do you remember downtown being flooded? We were all landlocked in. That's why. That creek was not being maintained properly by the city. There were non-native grasses, non-native trees, things had been thrown down in there, you know, it was just a hodgepodge of stuff going on down there, so the creek was not actually flowing the way it should. And if Sarah's there...
Since I've been here, uh, as I recall, the City of Kennedy, three different times, cleared the brush out of Escondido Creek to prevent the flooding of downtown Kennedy. Two times it grew back because they didn't take care of it properly. After the third time, they hired Sarah, and to what you were referring to, the thirty-five thousand a year water, to, to keep it maintained, and it's been maintained ever since then. I've lived here a long time. Your seats get changed very often, and what may be a priority today may not be a priority two years from now. And, uh, I just feel a lot safer, a lot more comfortable with Sarah, a bigger organization that has less turnover, less change, taking care of it for the long-term effect. And all we're trying to do is assure that. And as far as giving away land, you didn't buy it to begin with, if you wanna really know the truth. We, when we, when we were, as a project, uh, working this, we got, we acquired the land and put it in your name. So, you know, it, uh, it's not like you're giving some valuable asset away.
It was sort of a gift to the city to begin with.
Right.
So what happens if thirty, fifty years from now, you know, some, I don't know, some youngster comes in and decides, you know what, we don't need to spend money down there anymore? That's what, that's giving you the land.
That's, that's what I'm, I'm thinking that our, our commitment to it would be strengthened if we could say that we own the land. You know, I questioned this when we came up, but Mr. Graham has said, and he rightfully so, that lots of big deals are done on, on ninety-nine-year leases. Well, you can lease it to us for ninety-nine years, but you can't sell it to us or give it to us. That doesn't make a lot of sense. Also, evidently, the ownership does mean more than the lease since we're having this discussion about it.
No, 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 what I meant was, we give you the land, and then twenty, thirty years from now, Sarah decides, you know what, we don't want to spend money down there anymore.
Well, we would have a revisionary clause in the deed, and I'm not sure that that's the right language, but we're, we revert back to the City of Kennedy if we should ever cease to operate it as a park.
Okay.
So you would be getting it right back.
I just think Sarah has far greater resources when it comes to caring and maintaining for parks. They have a wealth of knowledge and expertise in this area that the city just does not have. And right now, that park is being maintained in an A-plus fashion. It is a real jewel, it is a real beautiful thing for the City of Kennedy, and I'm not sure that if at some point in the future, whether it's ten years from now or twenty years from now, whether the city would be capable of doing the same quality of work that the River Authority has done.
I'm not saying they, I'm not saying they can't, I'm just, I'm just asking the questions, I'm trying to understand what you're, what you're saying.
The other question would be, would the City of Kennedy pay for the upkeep that's gonna be necessary in the new deal?
Three hundred thousand a year, and like Galen said, that's gonna go up over time.
So the City of Kennedy prepared not only to take on the responsibility of mowing grass, but also doing the renovations and the upkeep?
General maintenance.
That's, that's, we do that with every property that we own. We, we just build that new park, and we gotta take care of that, we gotta take care of that. Has there been a problem with this agreement between the City of Kennedy and Yonk? Because it seems to me like there's a problem.
No, we're looking at the future. We aren't looking at just what's gonna happen the next two or three years. We're looking at what's basically gonna happen when we're all dead.
Well, I understand that, but I have no control over that when I'm dead.
That, that's why we're trying, that's why.
And I don't wanna, I don't want to, to, uh, obligate a future council to a decision that I'm making right now.
Pardon me?
May I ask a question, city attorney?
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Mr. Lynn.
Okay, Ms. Gadd. Okay, so here we go. Let's, you know, we can't make a decision tonight because this is a workshop, no action. We come back to this some point in the future, and, uh, the council takes a vote, no matter how it goes, and it's like, go ahead, give it to the 4B, so the 4B can give it, because that's the avenue we have to go through, okay? And they, 4B gives it to Sarah, Sarah gets it, and they put this revisionary clause in whatever, okay? Whether it's an agreement or a deed or whatever. The question I wanna ask you is this, can somebody come back fifty years from now on a document that's supposedly ninety-nine years and remove that revisionary clause?
It could, a future council or board could vote to, uh, to amend the agreement of that clause, if that was the previous position of that board at that time. Um, you know, documents can always be amended like that, yes.
So then it would be safe to say that while Mr. Elke has come up with this wonderful idea to, to do this, and everybody here tonight has been making cases for doing this on the premise that it would strengthen the park and, you know, Sarah's involvement in the park, even if we did this as a municipality, fifty years from now, sixty years from now, when none of us are here and we're all dead and gone, somebody could come back and change that back, and the City of Kennedy could be without completely if Sarah said, "No, we're not gonna do it like this." Because there is no guarantees. We can't commit Sarah's board fifty years from now to keep that clause in there, just like we can't commit the council fifty years from now to do this. You know, we're acting in the, what we're gonna do is we're gonna say today, we're all gonna get together and try to act in the best interest of not just each organization, but the constituents of not just Kennedy, because this is not a Kennedy park, this is a county park. So we're gonna, we are gonna be acting in the best interest of the county residents of Karnes County, hoping that the decision we make today is adhered to after we're all gone, regardless of what that is.
It's always, you know, the choice that you have to make, is any sort of council or board, what you think is going to be the best decision for today. Um, in the future, who knows, you know, what people could do, uh, like they, that is more, you know, a policy question, that you guys would just only be in charge of basically what you think would be the best option for today, there would be no assurances, you know, for the future.
So may I propose an alternative that hasn't been considered yet?
Okay.
Mr. Elke, rather than deeding the property over to the San Antonio River Authority 100%, do you think your board, if the city council of Kennedy was in agreement, would agree to co-ownership of the property, where the deed had both entities' names on it? Much like you would do with Mrs. Elke when you bought a piece of property jointly, or I would do with my wife, have a joint ownership. That way, if one person does, the other person still has.
How would you be able to do that? You would have to be deeding it to us. You would be deeding us fee simple, but you'd be deeding us half interest.
But, but I'm just asking if that's a possibility, because as the council has indicated already, they will feel more comfortable with our attorney working with your people, but this has been, this is an option that nobody has mentioned tonight, that I just thought of, and I thought, I'll throw it out there to see if it is even a viable option.
This wasn't about that option before, and, and, uh, yes, I think it would strengthen our position over the way it is today, but we thought that having the total 100% transfer with the fact that it would revert back if we did not operate it as a park anymore was a cleaner way to do it.
You, you will share liability too, that's the other issue. We own it and fee, we own all the liability, that's another benefit to the City of Kennedy.
Absolutely.
I think it would work.
But, true, true, Mr. Graham, but unfortunately for us as a city, that's not even something that bothers us, because we have a sports complex, we have other parks, we have other parks we're gonna be building, we're gonna have liability in those parks regardless. Our insurance is gonna cover those parks, this would just be another park to add to our insurance to cover, so that's not gonna be an issue for the city. So I just think that it was, it's an option that hadn't been considered, and I, I, I think it actually solves all the issues in my mind.
This was discussed a, a bit at the Oversight Committee meeting, and, um, and I, I wanted to hear from Ms. Gadd about this. Are, are there any advantages or disadvantages, one way or the other, considering a fifty, fifty percent ownership arrangement versus a hundred percent?
I would have to look into that a little bit further. I do have another question.
Sure.
But directed to Galen. Do you know, Galen, right now, who's taking care of the park now? Who's involved? What entity? Is it the City of Kennedy? Is it Sarah who's taking care of the park right now? And how much is that costing the city a year? Is it the thirty-five thousand Johnny was talking about, or is it the three hundred thousand you're talking about?
Well, as far as, as far as the moment, Tristan, you go ahead and answer that, because you're actually on the ground.
Good evening, I'm Krista Hansen, I'm the Watershed Park Operations Environment Manager. To answer your question, uh, the River Authority is maintaining the park now. Uh, the city, except for the, the security, uh, police and such, um, but besides that River Authority, we have, um, five staff that we rotate through because of the splash pad being open seven days a week and having people there. And, uh, right now, the budget this upcoming fiscal year to operate and maintain the park and all the amenities, including that splash pad, is about two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars a year. That will go up, we're talking about a Phase Two possibly, so obviously that'll extend, you know, possibly another person, that might extend, um, the amenities that we put, put in that area, uh, but that's approximately what we are going to be spending next year. And that does not include salary.
I was just gonna ask that.
It does not. Those are hard costs, those are utility costs and other hard costs, pressure washing, fixing a table, buying a lot of chemicals for that splash pad, because someone mentioned earlier that it was a little bit more than we, what we had anticipated. Um, I, in a previous position, put a splash pad in, I was only there a little short time before I took a different position in a different state, not in Texas. And so when we started to, to talk about a splash pad here, I did know a little about it. Um, the splash pad here gets so much use that it's, it's, it's overworking itself, you know? We had a little bit of an issue, nobody knows about, because it happened on Friday night at six forty, and they fixed it that night, and it was open the next morning. So if the staff stayed till ten o'clock at night, you know, to fix the splash pads so that the kids could enjoy on Saturday. So it's, it's much more involved, we do, we have people with certifications.
And monitoring the water quality.
We monitor, we, we test for the chemical levels a couple times a day, more so than you would do at a pool. Um, and they, they've been trained, we're certified pool operators, I'm one, I got the certification just because, not that you're gonna call me, because they definitely know more than I do, but they're, they're a great group of people. And one of the things that I want, I stepped up here earlier before we went into a different topic, you would ask, you know, well, what's the difference? One of the things that the River, I've been with the River Authority almost nine years, I'm not from Texas, but, um, I moved down here for this position, to be honest, from, uh, from the north, and I, what the River Authority does on a day-to-day basis for the communities that we serve is, is amazing, in my opinion. Um, I really can only speak for the apartment that I manage, but we do, we have seven nature-based parks from Bear County down to Golea County, and now, of course, this is included, the Escondido Creek Parkway, park is included in that, but it's one of, one of our, part of our mission, is to bring people close to the river, close to the tributaries, close to the creeks, so people can learn to appreciate and, and protect our waterways. And, you know, safe, clean, and enjoyable rivers is something, that's, that's our mission. And through parks, and we, we did, we had six thousand people come through this park, a small park in a small community, you know, in, in a two-month period. You know, we have parks in, in Wilson County, where they've got a Wilson County Trade Days, which is basically a farmer's market, and, you know, they have four hundred cars come through in a two-hour period just to go to that, you know? And so you're right, people are stopping at the fast food restaurants, people are stopping at HEB, they are getting gas in your, in your community when they're coming and going, not necessarily just for the splash pad, but the pavilion, you know? We see school buses here, kids eating lunch, or maybe the bus drivers, that's where they're taking their lunch, you know? We're going to be working now, the COVID has quieted down a little bit, you know, we're, we're ramping up all these park programs that we're going to do. We wanna do movies in the park, we wanna do, um, you know, small bands at the amphitheater, just to bring people to, to the park. So the answer to your question is, it's what we do, it's what I do, it's what I've been doing for twenty years. Very passionate about parks, I'm very passionate about bringing people out to parks and, you know, letting them recreate. Um, with COVID being obviously what it was in the past year, and people not really being able to be out and about, couldn't go to the mall, they couldn't go to the movies, they couldn't go see even their families if they weren't living with them, but people could go recreate in a park. And it's very important to keep it safe, clean, and enjoyable, and it's what we do. Thank you.
And Tristan, address the deal about, the city's not paying for us to own Escondido Parkway.
Creek parkway.
They're paying a smaller amount, and I texted one of my coworkers, I don't have that number, because it was an X amount for the whole area, but we took some of it out because that's part of the park. So we are still paying a little bit, but not, it's not park property, that we're, we're not double-dipping, I guess, so to speak.
It's $1,000 every time you mow.
Right, and I think we do it three times a year.
Three to four.
Yeah, three to four times a year, and we do it, and we get the city manager's permission, and then we send the bill. So it's not much that we charge, but we do it a few times a year. And honestly, because we're in the area so much more now, they do a little bit more, they kind of keep it a little cleaner than they have in the past when we weren't around as much as we are now. And it's the same team that treads the creek and also takes care of the park. It's Ben, who's there.
I'd like to ask her a question, kind of, real quick. How are those call boxes working out?
They're great. We're so thankful for those four call boxes that we put in. You know, we haven't had any problems with them. I don't know, Chief, if you have anything to add about the call boxes that you're...
Have they been used, Chief? Have any calls come in on the box?
No, we have not received any calls on it as of yet. But we, they are operational, I have checked them, and they are working.
Good. I just wanted to ask, since we had so many discussions about that...
Yes, a lot of discussions about them. They've been a great asset, so thank you.
And I don't want, I don't want y'all to think that I'm against San Antonio River Authority. I'm not against San Antonio River Authority. I'm pro-Kennedy all the way. You know me, Mr. Elke, I've worked here all my life in this area. And if, I'm just a, if it's not broke, don't fix it. I mean, if there's something that y'all need from us, I'm all for helping anywhere we need to help. And as a council member, I want to go on record to say that, that anytime that help is needed at San Antonio River Authority Park, you call, we're going to send somebody to help, because that's what community does, supposed to help each other. I don't want y'all to get the impression that I'm against y'all or anything, I'm not against y'all.
John, I completely understand where you're coming from on not wanting to give away properties, because that's something that's important for every city to hold on to, and it's good common sense. But circumstances are a little different here, because it is the San Antonio River Authority, and that's...
And I've lived here all my life also, I've been here 58 years, was born and raised. When I die, I want to get buried at Sacred Heart Cemetery, that's where I'm going. So I care about Kennedy, I love Kennedy.
And the River Authority's done great things for Kennedy and Karnes County and the whole region of South Texas, and I've seen that firsthand, serving on the Environmental Advisory Committee. The projects that they do are just tremendously beneficial to the people of South Texas. That's what makes this an unusual situation. We're not just giving property away to someone for the sake of, we don't want it anymore, this is special circumstances, and I, and Galen's made a good argument that if Sarah owns it, there's a more, there's no guarantees, like Mr. Lynn said, there's no guarantees, nobody can predict what's going to happen in the future, but if it may increase the likelihood that the park will be taken care of for a longer period of time, then I'm all in favor for it. And also, it takes a lot off of our plate in terms of, we have a lot to manage right now as a city, the sports complex and many other undertakings that are going on right now. If Sarah is willing to take care of this park for many, many years, I think that's a great thing for the communities.
Well, Mayor, you know, I think maybe at this point, since we're in a workshop, then maybe what we probably should do here tonight is maybe just let Ms. Gad kind of write up, take the document that you have, that we submitted to you, that Mr. Graham and I put together, and then maybe from what you've heard, maybe some of the scenarios that have come up, and see what avenues we can go down and how that might look in a document, since that's what this is about tonight, is this document. And then we can come back at another workshop later on, after you have the documents and the council can see the documents, and Mr. Elke and the gentlemen from Sarah, and, you know, whoever else wants to come, can have copies, and we can all sit down and go over them and discuss them, like we've done in other workshops, and then from there, we can figure out which document we like, and which one's going to serve the best, the mutual best interest of both organizations, which is really what we should be striving for. So I think, just again, my suggestion, since we're in a workshop tonight.
I agree with that, I think that sounds like a good plan. Does everybody here agree with that?
Good.
Well, good. Then let's keep the discussion going then, and see where it goes from here.
So then, I would probably say at this point, if we're ready to move on, we could just probably just set this aside for now, not, you know, adjourn it and just not do anything, and then maybe, say, what is this, June? So maybe come back, say, at the August meeting, because we're fixing to go hot and heavy into budgets here real soon, and then we'll discuss another date to have another workshop, some, maybe sometime in August, on this, to give Ms. Gad some time to do her research that she needs to do, to draft a couple of different documents to give to you guys to look at, to give to them to look at, and, you know, nothing's going to change in the meantime. I mean, the park's going to get taken care of, and Mr. Graham and I are going to work together just like we have been, and, you know, so that's going to continue on, so we're not losing anything here.
We have all the time, I mean, the two crises, things are going to keep going. I totally agree with Mr. Lynn, we've got time to work this out.
Yeah.
Great, that sounds good.
So Mayor, then I'll zip it.
Well, before we adjourn, though, I wanted to just give everybody else one more opportunity to ask any questions of anyone who's here in the city, or any comments from the public?
When I walked in the door, I told myself that I was going to keep my mouth shut because I was here to listen, but I'm not real good at that. I've lived here 60 years, and I've seen knee-deep water in the businesses downtown, I've drug sandbags, we've lost inventory. It has improved way, way, way far from that time, and a lot of it has to do with the maintaining of the Nichols Creek and Escondido Creek Parkway, and the efforts that have been put forward to make an improvement. I sit back as not being tied to any of this. I'm not tied to the River Authority, I'm not tied to the City Council, I'm not tied to any part of this, except for the fact that I live here and I appreciate what's been done to get that park here. I know all the hard work that's gone into it. I'm sitting back saying, listening to everything everybody has to say, I understand what everybody's saying, but I also know for a fact that it seems that y'all are looking at a gift horse in the mouth. Somebody's offering to give you a way out of maintaining the park, the responsibility and liability that comes with the park. All of those items are being offered to take something off of the city's plate. The city has so much that they could focus on besides that park. I grant you, I could stand up and say, this needs to be done, this needs to be done, this needs to be done, but that's not for me to say. But living here, having family here in this county, and been here all my life, you can see the city, residential areas go downhill, you can see a lot of things that the city could focus their time on while handing that off to somebody else that's willing to do it. They're not trying to steal y'all's property, they're not trying to steal your land, and that's what it sounds like sitting back here, that y'all are saying, oh my gosh, you know, they're going to take this property from us. That's not what they're trying to do, they're trying to put the property in the name of the experts that can handle the situation, to take care of that park and not have to worry the city with doing that. That is their expertise, that is what they do, that's what they're doing in the other counties. I've been to those parks, I've seen those parks, I know what's happening over there as well. And yes, there are items that y'all definitely would have to come to an agreement on about maybe maintaining and how much is going to be paid for this, small things. But the underlying foundation of this project belongs to the San Antonio River Authority, with the benefits going to the City of Kennedy for what you're getting. I have been in a store when a lady came in and says, don't they have any little bathing suits in here? And I went, no, you may want to try Walmart. Oh, good, we were driving from San Antonio to Park, and my kids saw that splash pad, and they just have to get in it. It, I've been down there when a carload of people said, oh, we just stopped to have a picnic here, we're from San Antonio, and we thought this was so pretty. I have a friend that lives in Tennessee that says they don't even have parks like that in their areas up there in Tennessee, that it's very nice. There's just a lot of benefit for the community to absorb from the park without having the stress that is being put on this situation, when it's almost a cut-and-dried, good thing that somebody's offering. Anyway, that's my opinion, and I just think y'all need to think real hard about, you know, what you're turning down if you don't accept what's being offered to you. And we do appreciate the police presence over there, and it's wonderful, those stations, and we thank you for that.
Thank you, Julie, I appreciate your comments. Are there any other comments or any questions from anyone here this evening? Yes, Chief?
I did want to bring up one thing. In your discussions, what kind of a unique situation for the police side of this, which is that you're not a city park, so as far as enforcing rules or whatever in the park, like, I can't tell somebody the park is closed, but we can enforce that because it's not a city park. It's private property, for lack of a better word. I did talk to Goliad and Wilson County about how they did theirs, and they basically don't enforce any rules at the parks, and it's just, they just do the state law. So if we want to do it that way, we can, I just kind of want y'all to talk about how you want to do that. The roadway, as far as our map shows, that roadway is a street all the way to 181. So the street, Poland Street, we can enforce state laws on, that is a city street, for lack of a better word. But as far as the other rules, if there's, I don't know if there's a way we can do an agreement, an MOU, or some version of that.
Yeah, that's a good idea, the park rules, we understand what you're saying.
Right. Because there, and I don't know if there's a way to do, put something in the ordinance or an agreement or something like that.
Take some work on that as well.
Yeah, yeah, y'all can figure out how you want me to do that. We can do...
That's a good idea, Chief. Thank you.
I was wondering if that might be something the Oversight Committee could have some involvement with, or are they more working on the...
Well, Mayor, whatever we develop, Mr. Lynn and Mr. Bays, and we'll have to come back to the Oversight Committee, they do have to sign off on the O and M portion of the agreement. So they'll see whatever we develop, they'll see it again.
Okay. Any further questions or comments?
I want to make a comment, and this is in regard to the many, many people that donated, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people that donated. And one of the questions that they always asked was, who is going to maintain it? And when I told them that it was going to be the San Antonio River Authority, they had no qualms, no questions, they, you know, wanted to donate then. And, you know, it just, it's along the same lines of what's been said already, that they have the expertise, and everybody knows the, what they have to offer, and everybody knows what they do in other communities, what they do in San Antonio, whether it be the museum reach or the mission reach. And Goliad, Wilson County, because people have visited those parks. And so it really is, it just, to me, and is there economic development, or is there, you know, what is it offering? There's people contacting me yet to this day from out of town, I'm not sure how they have access to my number, but they're coming and asking, when COVID was going on, what restaurants were open, you know, what stores were open. I mean, it just, it has so much to offer, there's just, it's unreal. And Facebook, on social media, so I just wanted to add that.
Thank you so much, appreciate your comments. Any other questions or comments this evening? If not, then I will declare this workshop meeting adjourned. Thanks to everyone who came this evening to have this discussion, appreciate it all.